Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Saleh.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Do we have any, um, uh, let's all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Bow your heads. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No changes.
We've got plenty of volume in here tonight. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Five ayes, votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two, uh, tonight we have, uh, some special guests with us. Uh, we'd like to recognize the Tennessee Tech University softball team. If, uh, Coach Atchison is here, if he could, uh, come to the lectern. Um, I've got a recent article here, uh, about the coach, uh, getting five years of...
In jail?
It's a little deceiving, a little deceiving at first glimpse there, but, uh, apparently we've signed, uh, Tennessee Tech has, has kept you for five more years and we're very grateful here in the community of Cookeville for that. I'd just like to read a few things here. Uh, riding the crest of the program's most successful season, Tennessee Tech University softball coach Tori Atchison has agreed to a five-year contract extension that will keep him at the helm of the Golden Eagle program through the year 2012. The Tennessee Tech softball, uh, this is, uh, from, uh, the, um, athletic director Mark, uh, Director of Athletics Mark Wilson here quoting, "The Tennessee Tech softball program has experienced unprecedented success under Tori's coaching and leadership and we are pleased that he has agreed to continue to be the Golden Eagle head coach. With the national exposure our program received this year in three consecutive trips to the NCAAs, Tori has become a hot commodity in the world of NCAA softball and this agreement is part of our efforts to help to keep him and Terry at Tennessee Tech for a long time." Um, and now I'd like to read a proclamation that the, that the city would like to offer. Whereas the Tennessee Tech softball team went 50 and 19 in 2007, making this their second consecutive 50-win season. And whereas this Golden Eagle team won the Ohio Valley Conference regular season championship, championship with a record of 20 to 5. And whereas by winning the OVC tournament, the fourth championship in five years and advancing to the NCAA regional tournament in Tuscaloosa, Alabama, and making it to the regional final brought national attention to Tennessee Tech University in this community as viewers around the nation watched on ESPN2. And whereas six players received all OVC honors, two received all regional honors, one was named an academic All-American, and two were named academic all-region for their outstanding play in 2007. And whereas, under the leadership and direction of head coach Tori Atchison and his wife Terry, the TCU softball team has become a strong program academically and athletically. Now therefore, I, Sam Saleh, Mayor of the City of Cookeville, do hereby proclaim these athletic achievements worthy of recognition and commend Coach Atchison and the Tennessee Tech softball team for outstanding play and sportsmanship. The recognition their achievements have brought to TCU and this community and bestow congratulations for being nationally ranked in the final two polls of the 2007 season, this fourth day of October 2007. If we could all, if the, the players, if you have those folks here, they can stand and we'd like to recognize you. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you all coming tonight, appreciate all your hard work. Yeah, they, yeah, they have to stay. We'll, uh, continue on here with the consent agenda, uh, containing, uh, items three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Um, item three is to set a date, October the 18th, for a public hearing on ordinance 071027, amending the Cookeville zoning code pertaining to section 220, the CN Neighborhood Commercial, for the purpose of increasing the maximum space, maximum square footage of the developments from 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of floor space. Uh, setting a date on a public hearing on ordinance 071028, rezoning 900 North Washington from RS10 Single Family to CN Neighborhood Commercial and 990 North Washington Avenue from CL Local Commercial to CN Neighborhood Commercial. Setting a date for November the 1st, uh, for a public hearing on ordinance 071029, rezoning 28, 38, 48, and a vacant lot on East Borden Street and 383, 389, and 395 Highland Avenue from RM8 Multi-Family Residential to CL Local Commercial. Item six, setting a date 11-1 for a public hearing on ordinance 071030, rezoning a portion of 777 South Willow Avenue from RS5 Single Family Residential to CG General Commercial and RS15 Single Family Residential. Item seven, set a date 11-1 for a public hearing on ordinance 071031, amending the Cookeville zoning code pertaining to section 207, general sign regulations for the purpose of allowing off-premise signs along the corridor of I-40 and Highway 111 to meet certain Tennessee Department of Transportation requirements. And item eight, consider rewarding bids for switch gears and transformers from the electric department. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion by the council?
Just a point of clarification on item four, I believe you didn't name, didn't say the date, that also is, uh, October 18th.
October 18th, excuse me. See no discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Five ayes, votes. Motion carries.
That brings us to our old business portion of the program, item nine. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September the 20th, 2007. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We have our motion and a second, any discussion by the council?
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Five ayes, votes. Motion carries.
That brings us to our old business portion of the program, item nine. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September the 20th, 2007. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We have our motion and a second, any discussion by the council? Seeing no discussion, uh, we have our motion and a second, seeing no discussion, I'll call for a, a vote. Uh, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five ayes, votes. Motion carries.
Item 10. Consider on second and final reading, ordinance 070926, amending Title 18, Chapters 1 and 2 of the Cookeville Municipal Code pertaining to water and sewer. Sponsor Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we discussed this last time and, and what brought this about. Uh, that's not my slides, must not have been put in. But, uh, a lot of the language change was ba, or was made necessary based on a sewer revision done, revisions to the, uh, ordinance is back in 1994 and, and some language is left out and that's been caught recently. We need to get that language back out or back into the, into the current ordinance. And, um, I had handed out to the council some language showing in red, the, the inserted language and some corrections we had to make to that language that was in 1994, the original language. We're reinserting it back in, correcting and updating some of the language, and then we're clarifying a couple of other changes in the ordinance on some different sections. And I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have our motion and a second, uh, any discussion by the council? Any comments by the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five ayes, votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Uh, Mayor, may I, uh, insert here, I think we left the item eight about, are we not gonna?
That was on the consent.
No, I read that.
Oh, okay, that was on the consent. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm having it in the wrong place, I'm sorry.
Uh, new business, item 11. Consider on first reading, ordinance 071032, amending Title 14, Chapter 1 of the Cookeville Municipal Code, Municipal Planning Commission, to set a compensation for planning commission members. Sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, uh, Tennessee Code annotated 13-something, I can't remember the number, uh, authorizes the legislative body of any city to set compensation for planning commission members. Uh, this ordinance would set their compensation at $100 a month. They, uh, they meet twice a month, they meet once on Thursday afternoon before the meeting to go through the agenda, uh, it is a public meeting, and then they meet on the, uh, fourth Monday of the month. And spend quite a bit of time driving around looking at different, uh, pieces of property that are considered for rezoning or, or whatever. Uh, I think this is long overdue and these people serve, uh, what, five-year terms?
Four.
Four-year terms, uh, I was thinking it was five, but four or five years, how about that?
Four for the council.
That's what I thought. But anyway, uh, they've served without, uh, compensation and I would recommend your approval.
Move for approval. Have a motion and a second, any discussion by the council?
Just a, um, moment of clarification here, but it says member attends, uh, does that mean that member has to be present? So, um, say, um, a member was absent that time or maybe the two times in the month, they would not receive their...
That, that is the way it's written now and it's, uh, uh, I guess to encourage them to come to meetings.
Well, yes.
Well, having served on there, it is a time-consuming thing and, and just increasingly so as our community grows and develops and, uh, I'd just have to say, I think this comes about five years too late considering I served on there before.
I would agree with the mayor, I, as the new council's rep for the planning commission, I spend a lot of time here and there and, uh, as we continue doing new things in order to protect the citizens through zoning and planning, you know, they're gonna be spending even more time than they currently are on, on things that James is working on, so that's a good time.
I totally agree too. At the very first, right after I decided to run for public office, that was one of the very first meetings I went to. I'd been to council meetings before, but when I went to planning commission, I went, oh, I don't think I want to ever do that, that's a hard job. And they do, they, they work very hard and are very committed to their jobs.
Yeah, it, it is a very good thing and I'm glad we're doing it. I guess one point, uh, to back up what Gene said, so if they attend the, this says per month for any month in which the member attends a regular or special call meeting, so if they attend one of the, the work session but don't attend the meeting, they get paid or how, only if they attend the meeting, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, that's the way the ordinance is written now.
Okay, that's fine.
Any comments from the audience? Any more comments from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five ayes, votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Item 12. Consider resolution 071017 to provide formal notification to Upper Cumberland, excuse me, Upper Cumberland Electric Membership Co- Corporation, relative to the purchase of service rights in six annexed areas. Sponsor Mr. Tony Pete.
Mayor and council, uh, this resolution, as, uh, the mayor read, is, uh, authorization for us to make an official offer to Upper Cumberland for the six areas that are mentioned, uh, in the resolution. Uh, we just feel that it would be more appropriate if the council, uh, approved this resolution. It's, it's a more formal process for me then to write a letter and, uh, make the offer to purchase. I'd recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have our motion and our second, any discussion by the council?
Uh, Tony, this is just, uh, this only, this is to spell out what was already declared by the judge as it relates to the litigation we have.
No, sir, this is six additional areas that have been annexed since, I think April 2003 was the first one and February of this year was the last one, on Love Lady Bunker Hill. And, uh, basically, as you well know, uh, there's two readings of an ordinance, uh, if you, if you folks approve that, at some point after that, the law requires the City of Cookeville, if they so desire to make an offer to purchase the facilities and service rights in those annexation areas. We have always done that by a letter from myself or the previous manager of the electric system, just feel it would be more appropriate if we did that, or, or got more permission from you through a formal resolution and made it a little more formal than what we have in the past.
Thank you, Tony.
Any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five ayes, votes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 13. Consider property acquisition at 126 North Oak Avenue for the Cookeville Regional Medical Center. Sponsor Cookeville Regional Medical Center, Mr. Paul Corr.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, Hospital Board of Trustees is requesting your consideration and approval of a piece of property located at 126 North Oak Avenue. Purchase price is $90,000, approximately 8,400 square feet. Uh, this property is within the medical district, it's across the street from property we already own there on Oak Street, uh, so this property will be used for additional parking and, um, land improvements, uh, for that building on Oak Street.
Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Have our motion and our second, any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. If you could approach the lectern there and identify yourself.
My name is Mackenzie Nellis. Uh, I, I rise with a, a sentiment from the community, uh, pertaining to the expansion of the hospital. Um, I am a member of a congregation who is recently spoken to by Sheriff David Andrews who, um, raised some concerns about the state of mental health and how we, how we care for the mentally ill in this, um, community. And, uh, and I, I would just like to raise at, at this time, uh, that as, as the hospital expands, could we consider also, and, and could this sentiment be considered carefully that, um, that burden be, uh, potentially shifted off and, and could we consider having housing and, uh, or beds or facilities for the mentally ill so that they don't have to be carted from community to community by our, our sheriff's department?
Thank you very much. I, I, Paul, if you wanna address that, that's fine. I, I know personally that, uh, the CEO of the hospital, Bernie Mattingly, and I met with the Commissioner, uh, of Mental Health in Nashville and discussed that. And at that time, it was agreed that there would be a summit held to begin looking at that issue, not just necessarily for Cookeville, but this region as a whole. And, uh, certainly, um, it, certainly it is needed and, and I think that it is something that is slated to be at least looked at potentially for the, the hospital and that area over there.
That is correct and as, as, as council's been aware and, um, has been in some of our planning meetings as we've gone for, forward, the new patient tower is going to relieve some areas in the old part of the building that, one of those things that will be looked at will be the mental health care.
At the present time, the, uh, present Plateau Mental Health Center has a stabilization unit that will see emergency and house emergency patients for two or three days, I think, a very short time.
Very short time, yes.
But that's just a, a baby step in the direction that we need to go in, uh, taking care of our mentally, uh, ill patients that we have in this community and that is lacking. But I will say that I have heard Bernie and, and others at, on the hospital board that are working in that direction to have that kind of service available, so it's slow coming, I know, but they're gonna get there.
But it's a statewide problem.
Yeah, statewide problem.
It's not just a problem in our community, it's, it's a problem statewide.
I think nationwide too.
And nationwide too, yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five ayes, votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Corr. Brings us to item 14. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Laurel Creek Incorporated. Sponsor Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, Laurel Creek Apartments is a nonprofit corporation that has constructed 20 apartments on Coral Road to provide low-income housing for the elderly and individuals with disabilities. Uh, state law provides that nonprofit corporations that are acting in this manner, that those apartments would be exempt from property tax. It also provides that if there's 12 or more units, that corp, nonprofit would pay in lieu of tax payments to the local governments. And Laurel Creek has provided the agreement they would like for you to consider. It would, uh, basically be the agreement for the in lieu of tax would be based on 10% of the rent collected from the tenants at the apartment complex. The estimate on that right now is $1,266 and the estimate for the city share of that would be $309. Uh, county officials have signed this agreement back in July, it's also the same agreement that was signed by Cumberland County and Crossfield, uh, but I'd ask you to consider that at this time and I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
We have our motion and our second, uh, any discussion by the council?
Is this how other nonprofits are handled or li, like this, or is it based on asset value?
We have, the only other nonprofit, of course, now the hospital authority, I'm trying to think, Jim, if we have any other ones.
Public Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority is based similar to that.
Basically the same principle.
Based on rent?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's the only other one I can think of off the top of my head, is the Housing Authority.
Have we had any comments from the Housing Authority about this? Is this any kind of a issue with them that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, they've not mentioned it at all to me.
Are, are they paying taxes now, property taxes based on their values of their property?
They've not paid, this is the first year that it's been assessed in '07. It's currently assessed right now at 370,000, so the city tax would be, based on our current tax rate, $2,928.
City portion.
City portion, the city portion alone, would be 20, $2,928.
This would be, uh, net savings of difference between that and 309.
For the corporation, for Laurel Creek.
How do we, um, how do we govern that they are renting those to low-income people?
That's basically would have to be a certification from them that that's what's happening down there. I can request that annually from them and make them certify to that. Uh, that's part of the, uh, their charter requires that in the corporation, I've looked through those documents and that's part of their requirements there. And being the nonprofit is that those facilities are rented to low-income housing, they lose that status if it's not.
Do they, do they show us a rent roll though, where they come up with the estimated 10% or?
Not yet, th, those apartments I don't think are filled yet.
Okay.
Uh, but that's something I can request when we go to calculate this for them.
Rental looks slow to me, I mean...
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
10%, it'd be $12,000 a year, I mean...
For 24 apartments.
I would ask council, uh, what, could we, since we already have an agreement with Cookeville Housing under one scenario, could, could we put this agreement and base it off of, of asset value?
You, you could definitely, um, make your agreement with Laurel Creek, um, coincide and, and be in line with the agreement you already have with the Cookeville Housing Authority. Um, I don't think the city asked us to look at this before the meeting, so I'm not sure exactly what the Housing Authority agreement says, but, um, you could take that agreement and see if Laurel Creek will adopt that agreement so you can make it the same. Um, but it's my understanding that this agreement, uh, Mr. Shipley and Mr. Rader discussed it and it's fine from a legal standpoint, there's no legal hurdle with respect to passing this.
Unless there's a, it just seems to me like there might be something, is there something in the agreement that where they have to verify the rent roll? Because if they're un, if they're unoccupied and the, and they're providing, uh, low-income housing and they end up getting $400 a month rent for 24 units, I mean, that's a lot different than, that income basis is a lot different, you know, that 10% would be much higher.
If you enter into an, an agreement based upon their, um, the, the tenants they have and the rents they collect, the city, and you could obviously ask them to look at their books and make sure that they're paying the proper amount. If you're in, entering into an agreement based upon 10% of that, sh, you could surely look at their books to make sure that they're paying the correct amount.
And if they, and if the 10% amount happens to be more than their city matching, then they would just be required to pay the city match, correct?
Correct. That's just their estimate at this time, I asked them for what their estimate would be on the in lieu of tax payment, that's their estimate at this time. But it would be based on, we would request that information and try to calculate it based on their actual occupants and the rent that they actually received.
I, I guess my question though was, if we have a, one agreement with Cookeville Housing based on one scenario, which is this, can we legally have another agreement with this organization, being the same type of organization, and base it off of asset value, can it, can we have a different setup than what we currently have? That's my question.
Yes, you can enter into an agreement with Laurel Creek Apartments and the council can make an agreement based upon the state law that Mr. Davidson's referred to and have your agreement with them. You can also have a separate agreement with the Housing Authority and, um...
They don't have to match, they don't have to be the same.
They don't have to match, but if one or the other makes an issue of that, then we'd look at that, make sure, you may have to amend one so they do match, but right now I don't see a problem with passing it as it's written.
Well, I'd probably just feel better about if it was based on value of the property, asset value of the property, which we know what that is, we don't know what this other is, I, I, that would be my only thought process, that we could certainly secure guaranteed more, a little more for the city, uh, for the taxpayer that, which is what we're supposed to be doing, I would think. So, um, I don't know, could, could we possibly defer this and, and maybe look at it just a little bit more and see what the possibilities are, if, if any of the rest of the council is interested in doing that?
Mr. Shipley, what's your recommendation?
Yeah, we, we certainly can do that. I, I think you got a motion and a second on the floor, but I mean, you could always vote it down if you wanted to at this point, it doesn't have to be passed tonight and I, I can tell you from Mr. Davidson and my standpoint, we didn't want to have to bring this to you for approval, so, uh, we, it's basically state law requires us to do it, so...
Well, could we, could we pass it and then, um, if we research the particulars of it that we, that, and you feel that it needs to be more in line with, uh, Cookeville Housing Authority, then could we have amendments then to what, or changes? Can we do that? Is that, how about that?
What about... My, my recommendation would, would be to, to table this issue until we have a, a chance to look at the statute more closely. And if you want us to look at what's the extent the city can collect under TCA 675207 and comply with state law, but maximize the taxation for the city, we can look at that and work within those parameters, but you have to follow the state law on this.
I don't believe there's anything, from what I've found in state law, that, that says it has to be 10% of the rent collected. I think we could, uh, possibly look at any other options that you all would feel more comfortable with.
I, I mean, there, there's a huge disconnect between what the, the asset value is and the tax would be 2,700 and the estimate that we will get $309. I'm not saying we should collect 2,700 because obviously they're, they're providing a needed service for the community, but perhaps it should be a little more equitable for all concerned and both share in, in that, and that's where I'm coming from with this, so if...
it has to be ten percent of the rent collected. I think we could possibly look at any other options that you all would feel more comfortable with.
I mean, there's a huge disconnect between what the asset value is and the tax would be twenty-seven hundred and the estimate that we will get three hundred and nine dollars. I'm not saying we should collect twenty-seven hundred, because obviously, they're providing a needed service for the community, but perhaps it should be a little more equitable for all concerned and both share in that, and that's where I'm coming from with this, so if, I guess, whoever made the motion and second, if they're interested in doing that, we could certainly rescind that and then table it and look at it further.
I'm interested in doing that, but I had one more question, these taxes that they're, are they trying to pay taxes from the previous year, or these are upcoming taxes to do in January?
This would be based for oh-seven taxes.
Okay. So we could defer it or table it for at least two months and still?
We haven't looked at the issue, but the other issue you'd have to look at is you have the county who's providing the same or similar discount, so I'm not even sure the city can have a different contract from the county, and we can certainly take a look at that as well, because I'm not sure if the state law requires the county and the city to have different rates or the same rates, because you have one property assessor assessing the property value.
But surely the county's agreement would not, shouldn't obligate the city to do something, I mean, that
I sure would like to read the statute before I entered that question.
Right, so. Who made that?
Who made the motion and second?
Anderson.
I made the motion. Now, this always brings up the parliamentary procedure. What is the parliamentary procedure on that? Do I have to rescind my motion or ask to table it?
Withdraw it.
Just withdraw it?
Withdraw it, even with the second?
It has to be second, it's the
Same verse.
I always want to turn around and get my parliamentary procedure book out, but that's just my schoolteacher-ness on me. Then I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Who made the second?
Davis.
No, I'm going to withdraw my second.
That just, we've got to look this out.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item to the next council meeting and
I make a motion to table it until we can further investigate it and then come back before the end of the year with a recommendation.
Uh, hold on, we, the city manager would like for us to make a motion to defer instead of table.
Yeah, if you table, then somebody's got to get it off the table, so it's easier to just defer it, to that.
Do you have to have, you don't have to have a motion to defer, do you, or do you just not deal with that?
Well, now that we've withdrawn it, doesn't that just drop it?
It can die from lack of action at this point.
Okay, let's let it do that.
Let's just let it die, we'll bring it back.
Back up.
Or resuscitate it at another meeting.
We'll have CPR audit.
All right, moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
We need to finally tear him.
I don't think it's a big issue, I just think
I agree.
Item fifteen, consider approval of charter settlement agreement. Sponsor, Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, in May of this year, you approved a contract with John Howell of, what's the name of his company?
Rifkin.
No, that was the cable company at one time, but anyway, he's the auditor, the Howell Group LLC, doing business as Telecommunication Consulting Associates. You approved a contract where he would audit Charter Communications for the years, July first, two thousand, through June third, June thirtieth, two thousand and six, to see if they were actually reporting all of the franchise fees to the city that they were required by contract to do. Over those years, he found a total of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars of unreported franchise fees they were supposed to be collecting, and it basically depended on definitions of certain services, which they were required to pay us a franchise fee for. Under that agreement with Mr. Howell, he was to receive one half of all the money that he found in deficit, so he gets one half of the two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. That agreement is ready for me to sign, and I would like to have your approval to sign it and get our one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. I think this will also mean, if you take those years and divide that two twenty-eight, four seventy-five, it should be an additional thirty-five to forty thousand dollars extra a year in franchise fees for us. The downside is that any time you tap the cable company for a franchise fee, all they do is turn around and pass it along to the customer.
Well, we don't know that they're going to raise their rates.
And in fact, most cities, most cities charge a five percent franchise fee, we have always just charged three because all they do is pass it along to the customer, so.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Does he collect the money and then, how does this work?
The check comes to us in full, and then we write him a check.
Okay, so is there something set up to make sure that all the money, all the things that he found don't happen again in the future?
Well, you would hope that they would report that from now on in the future, but unless you audit their books, they're like any other company, you're not going to know if they're doing that or not, and it, they had been, they've been audited all over the state, and I'm sure that a lot of those same deficiencies are being found, so to say they really didn't know what they were doing is probably not true, but.
Is this an audit that we can perform ourselves, or have our auditing company do, or is this so specialized that?
I don't know that it's all that special, all you have to do is read the franchise agreement and look at their books.
Any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience?
It's always nice to find money.
Yeah, it is.
Unless you're paying fifty cents on the dollar to find it.
Unless you're writing the check, you're right.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
If yes, votes motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley.
I'd like to add that to Mike Davidson's job description for two thousand and seven.
He needs another job description.
Item sixteen, consider approval of amendment to the engineering contract for repainting the Pilot Knob Water Tank. Sponsor, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, our engineering contract for the Pilot, repainting of the Pilot Knob Water Tank, which is the metal tank that sits back behind the new tank you see sit on the interstate, on the interstate, original contract was set up as a lump sum and an hourly rate contract. We had estimated, based on the amount of time allowed, that we were going to allow in the construction contract, that the engineering contract would run around fifty-five thousand dollars. Paint contractor overran the allotted time for construction, which drove up the estimated engineering costs we had had on the front end. The final cost of the engineering contract totaled sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-six cents, and this is eleven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen, twenty-six, over what we had originally estimated. Original paint contractor, paint, painting contractor, contract was four hundred and ninety thousand, I gave you those numbers. The amount due him is four hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred dollars, and we're also exercising our liquidated damage clause in our contract with them for their overrun of time, which will be paying the additional engineering costs that were incurred due to his extended time on the project. And we're here to seek your approval on this item. Here's the, I think I brought, if they didn't cut them out, here's a, here's a, it's sort of hard to see in here, but the picture on the right's sort of the inside of the tank pre-painting, on the left is sort of, lighting's not good in here where you can't really see them, they show up good on computer screen, but that's the final version inside the tank. That's another shot inside, the condition before and after.
Okay.
And then there's the before and after outside.
Four hundred and sixty-one.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
So in essence, we're backcharging the contractor
That's correct.
by exercising liquidated damages to pay for the overage, so the
That's correct.
on a balance sheet, we're square, correct?
Yes.
When we exercise liquidated damages, does that affect the warranty period at all from the contractor?
No, we have, we have requested and received extra warranty also from contractor.
So how, go ahead.
You go ahead.
To paint this inside and outside costs four hundred and ninety thousand dollars?
That was the original contract bid amount, and it ended up being four seventy-three was the final payment, subtracting out the liquidated damages.
So, but to paint the inside and outside that one time costs four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars?
Yes. You got to strip, you got to, they strip it down to bare metal, repair any pits and so forth, repair, all kinds of repairs on it, yes, I mean, that's what they constantly did.
How often do we have to do that?
That one probably was eighty-three, eighty-three, that was probably close to twenty years, I mean, twenty years is pushing them.
And a new tank cost how much?
Uh, depends on
Like that?
size. I don't know about that one, I know that
What was the thing that we built?
The concrete tank, which was a ten million gallon tank, cost, I think its total cost was around two and a half million, you can't quote me on it.
It was pretty close.
Yeah, because I can't remember all the site costs.
Half that size.
That's half. Yeah, we evaluated whether it's cheaper to tear it down and put back a concrete tank, and the numbers didn't work, it was better to go ahead and refurbish it and try to get that extended life out of it, and that's why the numbers ran out.
And I'm sure this is highly regulated, isn't it, the, I mean, by the state and that
Well, there's, the blasting material and all the lead issues that's on there, those have, we have manifest where those have been taken off and protected hopefully from all those type issues.
Is this the first time this has been painted?
That's the first, except for the original.
Right, well, what I mean, since we
First repainting on that one. We'll be doing the next couple of years, the Shoney's, probably the checkerboard one you see out there by the high school, that'll need to be repainted in the next couple of years. They may want a big cavalier logo put up on it or something, I don't know. It doesn't have to be checkerboard anymore, because it was, there was an airport there, that's why it had to be checkerboard.
Oh, that's interesting.
Any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign.
If yes, votes motion carries.
Mr. Kelly. Item seventeen, consider awarding bid for replacing the message center at the Drama Center Leisure Services Department. Sponsor, Mr. Rick Woods.
Mayor and members of council, we advertise and receive bids for a new sign, new message center at the Cookville Drama Center. We put a lot of options in there to try to maximize the best sign that we could possibly get, the most that we could get for the money that we had available, and so I've described to you in previous memo the options, the explanation of the options, but we go from a single face, single color, to a two-face, full color, or two-sided, full color sign. Martin's sign was a low bid on all of the options. We also put a deduct on there for us, for our city personnel to be able to build the support structure, and I'm here to recommend that we award a bid to Martin's signs. We would like to do, at a minimum, a two-sided sign, a single color, be happy to take a two-sided sign, full color as well, but at the very minimum, I'm recommending that we approve a two-sided sign, single color, with the deduct option. It makes sense for us to go ahead and build the support structure, and it's a significant savings for us there. So that would be option four that I'm recommending at a minimum. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
I'd like to make a motion that we do, now let me make sure I'm right, option two, the two faces, full color.
Do we have a second? I'll make a second to that. Any
May I ask why my colleagues, why would, that would be more important than what the department's recommending?
Well, I just have thought about it, and as I've driven through the streets of Cookville over the last couple of, since we've been discussing this, I just thought that why not just go ahead and get the two faces, two color, you know, full color, and that brings it very close to their budgeted amount, and I just think that it would be attractive and look good on the front of the Drama Center, and being somebody involved in the arts, arts is certainly, you know, the arts are definitely a colorful thing, and I, the more I thought about it, at first I thought, just let it be a single color, but the more I thought of it, they can scan stuff into it, and then it go right into the full face of the screen, and, you know, I just, I don't know, I just thought it'd be more attractive.
Looking at the pictures that were provided in our packet there, particularly the we-sell flags and the Tennessee Tech emblem and that sort of thing, you know, I guess the thing that concerns me would be that if we're going to spend this kind of money and get that close, you know, or we're going to have the one color sign and come back and think, oh, you know, why didn't we just go ahead and do the color? Because there's really not that much difference, and
Well, there's a, there's a, maybe I'm missing something, I'm seeing eleven thousand dollars difference, like, like twenty-five percent more?
I mean, we talked, we've talked at work session, too, I guess the, I mean, I'm all about, you know, having high tech and all that, too, and I agree, the full color does look great, and I'd mentioned maybe doing one face, full color, and I know the recommendation was that you'd rather have the, or that it would be better to have the ninety-degree angle, and it faces more corners, and I definitely agree with that, and that's why I was very much in support of the two-face, one color, I, you know, just, I guess, just because we budgeted that much, I don't necessarily think we should. My only other issue with it is technology changes so fast and prices change so quickly, you know, on these LED boards, you know, if it's that important that we have the two-face full color, then let's wait another, till the two thousand and eight stuff comes out, and not only will it be better, it'll be cheaper, and, you know, we might save another ten percent, that would get it down closer even where it could be with, totally within the budget, if that's what we want to do.
Mr. Woods, how long have you been looking at these prices?
Well, we've been looking, since the last budget process began last year, we started looking at what two-face, single color sign would be at that time, so that's been, actually, we went back a little bit before that and looked at in previous years, just to try to get budgetary figures
Right.
to see if we could do it, and knowing that this was, you know, coming up, so it's been, it's been a while.
Do you see, have you seen, over the period of time that you've been looking at it, have you seen a significant drop in prices?
Honestly, we haven't looked at pricing them like this.
Okay.
We've looked at just budget numbers, what kind of ballpark figure are we looking at?
Well, I can assure you, if you look in anything about HDTV's or anything else, and this is very similar to that, the prices go down certainly every few months, if not faster than that, new models come, everything's new, starting in January, they have the Consumer Electronics Show, which is based off of this, all that happens January, February, March of every year, so I'm not disputing what will or won't happen, I'm just saying
Right.
that it will come down, technology, that's just what technology does, but I'm, again, if some of you think we should do it, we can certainly vote on it, and that's fine. I'm not, I definitely think it would, it's awesome, the two faces, two color, that, you know, it's beautiful, you know, do we need to spend eleven thousand dollars extra at this time? That's a matter of opinion, I guess.
I wanted to ask, because you, the department was recommending the two-face, one color, and it is eleven thousand dollars cheaper, that is there a financial reason there possibly that you chose the
When we, when we first started looking at it, we were looking at replacing the sign that is there, which is two sides, has two faces on it, of course, it's not an electronic message board, we were looking at something similar, and we were thinking that single color was more in the realm of what we, you know, we should, we should be looking at. We were getting prices on that, we budgeted basically for that kind of amount, then we stepped back later and looked at it and said, let's just see what it would cost to do and put the other options in, to see if we could do full color, and that's why we bid it the way we bid it, and when the bids came in, we realized that with the deduct, we were pretty close to doing a full color sign with two sides, so the original thinking was that we would do two sides, single color.
So the, if we approve this tonight, when are you estimating that you would have this built and installed?
Forty-six weeks.
Really? And what's the, as far as the structure itself, sitting out there, the sign itself, is there any physical difference on those? I mean, not electronically, obviously, there must be something there, the LEDs, I guess, are, you know, different, but as far as the structure of the sign, they're identical, correct?
To the one that's there now?
No, to either
Oh, I see, two colors, yeah, they are the same, that's correct.
And we are still going to keep the sign across the front, that
Yes.
parading out the broad?
Yes.
Do we have any comments from the audience? Do we have any comments? Do we have any comments for the comments from the council?
And the motion is for the $38,000?
The current motion is for the full, the...
Option two.
Mac Daddy, the two-color, two faces, full color, go all out here.
With the deduct.
How long have we had?
Did you say with the deduct?
With the deduct, I'm assuming, yes.
Yes.
I mean, how long, I wonder what the life on one of these electronic signs are? I mean, this, are we looking at a five-year, 10-year, 20-year investment here?
I don't know.
Personally, I like the idea of doing a, Rick, because we've discussed this before, I kind of like the idea of doing a two-sided, single color, so we could spend the balance on a movies in the park. But...
Or fixing the steps.
Sometimes it's good to not spend all of the money, so we can spend it on something else.
Fix the steps.
Very good comments. Do we have any other further comments?
Well, I would, of course, I like the color and all that, but I would, I guess I'm just frugal enough to say, I think at this point, I would rather stay with the $27,000 with the two-face, one color because, like has been pointed out, technology changes rapidly. And I just feel more comfortable with that since it is, I do look at finances quite closely.
Well, I do look at finances quite closely too. But, you know, at this point, when you're looking at it, we budgeted X amount, and it's kind of like when you put the carpet in your house. If it costs you $500 more to get the better grade, then I'm going to get the better grade, you know, and squeeze out $500 somewhere. So I just thought, you know, sometimes people just need to have a nice thing.
I think too is that, you know, particularly representing the city of Cookville, I'm a proponent of doing quality things. I know, you know, obviously, we've done renovations to this part of City Hall, and it looks fantastic. And, you know, sometimes it's just worth it to go ahead and do things, spend a little extra, get things done right, and do them, do them the best you can the first time around. But, you know, I do understand the point about technology changing.
Yeah.
I guess what I was asking earlier was, you know, if we go with the one color at this point, but the sign's already built, I mean, is it a, I mean, is it the computer that sits inside? Or is it actually the board itself that's the board?
It's the board.
It's the board itself. It's the board itself.
So if you wanted to go to color later on, you'd have to replace the board.
Well, by the time this, if we do the, if we do the one color and it wears out, the price of the LED or something better than LED, high definition with whatever is going to be half the price of what this is, and by the time this wears out anyway. So, anyway.
That'd be another council's problem.
Yeah, that's another council's deal. That's right.
We might want to do a roll call vote, please.
I think we should.
Well, listen, if there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
The call is going to be option two. That's two faces, one color.
No.
Full color. Two faces, full color with the deduct.
Yes, that's correct. Are we voting now?
Roll call.
Councilman Anderson?
I vote yes.
Councilman Shelton?
No.
Mayor Sully?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davis?
No.
Councilman Williams?
No.
I've got three no, two yes. Motion fails.
Well...
Now can we have another motion?
Do we have a motion to approve?
I like the board that's out there. I make a motion, we approve the two-face, one color.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we need to go through discussion on that? Seeing no discussion, let's have a roll call vote.
Councilman Anderson?
I'll vote yes.
Councilman Shelton?
Yes.
Mayor Sully?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Brings us to item 18, consider awarding bid for residential sanitation carts, one of our favorite things to do here at City Council. Sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, after recent annexations and people getting extra carts, our inventory has run low. We received prices from the only company that supplies the brand that we use. It's $58 apiece. Their minimum order is 100, which is $5,800. I would request your approval.
We have a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Have our motion in our second. Any discussion by the council? Still having pretty good life out of the carts?
Very good.
I got the best compliment about those, and that sounds crazy, but somebody visited us and said, oh, you've got the nicest-looking trash cans. And then soon after that, I drove, I was in a different city, and they had them bright red. So yes, we think those are great, the nice, subtle green ones. Oh, I guess we have to put a motion on them.
President Bell asked us to do purple ones, I thought, but I guess we're not going to do that.
They can have them at T.A.
I had a question since we're talking about sanitation. One of my most important constituents is my wife. And when I go home today, she's going to ask me, since we're bought containers, have we ever considered buying in bulk containers for recycling that citizens can actually pay for in order to have a recycling container? Because I know at my house, I'm constantly taking this nasty mess to the recycling center. It'd be nice to have a, like a specific recycling container.
Are you talking about for us to pick up or just have a container for the...
No, just a container. So we, and part of the reason for it is I know a couple of the other council members are interested in possibly recycling in the recent future. And so my thought was, is if we had the opportunity where citizens could buy recycling containers, maybe we could get a pulse as to whether there was a vast majority of citizens that actually would like to have something like that.
No, we haven't looked into that.
Do you think we could find out what one would cost?
What kind of, we'd have to determine, I guess, what kind of containers you're talking about. Is it...
And I'm at an elementary school level when it comes to trash containers. That's...
We can look and see what's available.
Please.
For you.
Me.
We're happy. Do we have a motion on the floor?
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I don't think we need a roll call for this, but all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Mr. Brown. At this time, we had our Tennessee Tech softball team here with us earlier, the Lady Softball. But we also have another distinguished group of students with us tonight. We have Dr. Earl Hutchinson, who's here tonight with his advanced reporting class, some good friends of mine. If you guys could all stand and be recognized, we certainly appreciate you being here tonight. And if you have any comments or any questions, you're welcome to come up, and we'll try our best to answer those. We, at the end of every one of our meetings, we ask for comments and questions from the public, and that would include you all. So if you have anything for us, please let us know. And if otherwise, we're... Yeah, we have a three-minute rule here, but you're welcome to speak for three minutes.
It doesn't apply to council, though, the three-minute rule.
And you are welcome to come back even if your professor asks, doesn't ask you to come.
That's right. We need warm bodies here. But thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate you being here. Does anyone on the council have any comments or any of you all have any comments? This is a part of our meeting that we do, open the floor up to the citizens of Cookville and to others. And please come and share your ideas with us. We had a pretty full house earlier, but softball team took most of the seats. But if anybody has any questions or comments, feel free to come up and speak. Anybody from the council? Any comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.